I just think that you're...
Just as much space. The hard skate's a much bigger, right?
I think it should go in the chapter nine.
If I could do my whole year, I'd dedicate and maintain it. It's almost, yeah, you know who's doing it on, you know Bobby Banano?
Evidently that call is gonna fit.
So, Banano does a Bravo, the crew guys.
Yeah, yeah, they're great. I love them.
So, but, so, the stipulation...
Give it, give that gavel a rap.
They need to, they use, have to use them for the hard skate, too.
There you go.
All right.
That was a very weak gavel.
I don't know what he's...
He's doing it with the bum hand.
Sorry, sorry for the...
Because we're in chambers, we will recite the pledge allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberating justice for all.
Great. I'm gonna call the committee on finance to order. Chair Viola, with me on the committee is Consulor Campbell, who's absent, Consulor DeMers, Consul Farulo, and Consulor Mercer Bruin.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we suspend, uh, dispense with the reading and approve the previous meeting's minutes from May 27th, June 4th, and June 5th.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the order that the sum of $150,000 is hereby appropriated as stated from traffic safety and infrastructure account, Fairfield New Boston Street mitigation for traffic signal installation, Presidential Way, in Woburn. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee and the council. Pretty straightforward transfer request. Again, this is pertaining to signal installation at Presidential Way up at New Boston Street, near the bridge. We've been talking about this project and this mitigation component for a while now. This is the transfer to advance that along in terms of design and then eventually construction. I am, and joined here this evening by the city auditor Doherty, as well as the city engineer, Alex Rozicki, if you have any particular questions about the transfer.
Anybody on the committee have any questions, comments? Councilor Mercer Bruin.
Just, I remember, who? I remember when this money was put into the mitigation account. I only can assume, Mayor, that it's using, going towards all the things that it's supposed to go to on the traffic, so, thank you.
Consul Farulo.
Mayor, can I ask a quick question? Is it Presidential Way or industrial way? Presidential Way in New Boston, don't meet.
This is Presidential Way on the northeast side of the bridge.
So Wilmington, we would call it Wilmington now.
Yes.
Good, thank you.
Make a motion that the auditor sent out ought to pass.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, withstand adjourn at 6:03.
I'd like to call to order the committee on ordinance, charter, and rules. Consulor DeMers acting as chair. On the committee are Consul Toro, Consul Mercer Bruin, Consul Farulo, and Consul DeMambro. Is their motion to dispense with the reading in the previous meeting's minutes an approval?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, the one item on our agenda tonight is an order that the city council take the next necessary steps to fill the vacancy in the position of the deputy superintendent of public works. As you all know, when a vacancy like this becomes, or a vacancy occurs, the ordinance committee has to review the current ordinance. It's the advice of the chair that since we reviewed this thoroughly last time, and this is a quick turnaround from the previous hire, that we move forward on this this evening. What is the will of the committee?
Make a motion, the order be adopted.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, the order sent out ought to pass. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Sir? Thank you.
I am Jeff Dillon, city council president, Ward Three city councillor. I call a committee on liaison to order. We have two things on our agenda tonight.
Make a motion that we dispense with the reading in the previous meeting's minutes and approve?
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
That passes. The second one is citizens' participation requests from Jack and Karen Foley, 86 Beach Street, to discuss the sidewalk extension at the intersection of Beach Street and Salem Street. I believe Mr. and Mrs. Foley are here, correct? If you'd like to come forward. Just state your name and address for the record, please.
Jack Foley and Karen Foley, 86 Beach Street, Woburn.
Thank you. Tell us your thoughts on this, please.
Well, since we put this markings up there, and then we brought it back 15 feet, it's still a speedway. And all I'm hearing, there's been three accidents since that went in. Not major, no, nobody was hurt, I believe. But the horns, and it's gonna be a major accident up there the way it is. So, we gotta find something else to do. Just on the bend.
Yeah, this, that bend is no good. It's, it, and it can't make it any larger, because that's just gonna create more of a problem.
Good. Questions?
Just...
Councilor Mercer Bruin.
Wanted to just, and thank you both for your time earlier today and last month. I know that there's concerns about the project in general, and we're gonna get together soon to go over some of the different options that the community will see, but, so Jackie and Karen, I just wanna understand, so the markings, the way I understand it, the markings have been put there to slow the traffic down, or to...
It hasn't, it hasn't slowed it down at all.
Okay.
It's just come flying around the corner.
Mm-hmm, yep.
And it doesn't matter how much is out, they still can just come flying, it's just real busy on that corner.
Oh, it's, that corner is terrible, hence one of the reasons why the city needs to address something.
If it was more squared off, like every other street, I don't think you'd have as much of a problem.
And there will be options, as we discussed earlier, and a couple of months ago, there are several options, not several, but about three, that we'll be able to look at as a community, but, you know, given your location, and some of the locations of the homes right there on Beach Street, I'm gonna hold a smaller meeting, you know, before we roll everything out, right? But at the end of the day, it's important for us to understand your feedback, because you're, you're, you're feet on the street, if you will, right? So, it, where you live, your perspective is that this is doing nothing. Okay. So, I, I told you this morning, I was gonna find out if we have some kind of metrics, right? Because if we don't have any kind of metrics that say, oh, yes, it was this speed before, and now with the lines, it's this.
Traffic isn't as bad in the middle of the day. It's like morning traffic and the evening traffic.
Seven to, seven to nine, and, you know, four to seven, is my guess.
Three, three.
Three, three. Pretty soon, we do have Alex here, President Dillon, from the city engineer's office. I don't know, I don't wanna put him on the spot, but I'm not sure, Alex, did you have some information to present to us in terms of metrics, or...
So, I did require...
Alex, come right up, speak into the microphone for the audience.
Yeah, Alex Rozicki, city engineer. I did request the traffic counts, sorry, not traffic counts, speed counts from the police. I think it was a quick turnaround to get it today, but we could present it or put it into the packet for future consideration. I, I would probably tend to agree that the lines don't stop car tires, so it'd be hard to quantify people actually slowing down, and I think taking additional measures to slow down the rate of traffic is, and particular speed is probably warranted in this intersection. As you mentioned, we're working with our design consultants to get to a spot where we can unveil some potential changes to the intersection, probably this fall would be most appropriate, and then we'll go from there to see if it's, you know, the appetite of the community to implement any of those measures.
President Dillon, do I still have the floor?
Yes, please.
Thank you. One of the things I was hoping to understand, Jackie and Karen, so, so have you seen issues because the lines are there?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, some people come around that corner, and almost like they're on two wheels anyhow. I mean, they...
They're cutting other people off coming out of it, Beach onto Salem.
I mean, a normal street, you know, is squared off, and people just automatically, I think, slow down and take a right or a left. But these people just come down Salem Street and just fly around that corner.
But, and again, if I'm, I'm just, I wanna make sure I'm understanding what you're saying. So, since we put the lines in, that has caught, because that issue that you described has been going on for a long time, right? People flying around, that's one of the things we're trying to solve, as well as crossing through that intersection, right? But you're saying you feel as if things have gotten worse since the lines went in?
Yeah.
Okay. So, maybe the city, we can take a closer look at that, and then we'll get together very soon to, to look at the other plans. All right?
Thank you.
Oh, you're very welcome, you're very, I know it's cold in here, isn't it, Karen?
Consulor DeMers.
Thank you, Mr. President. No, I just wanna commend Consul Mercer Bruin. Her and I have been working on this for, I mean, Consul Bruin's been working on this for quite some time. One of my constituents reached out and brought up, you know, the impact that it was having on Bow Street with student pedestrians, so, I, I know we are anxiously awaiting some more finer point plans. I know City Engineer Rozicki has been working on it. We, we looked at, the very suggestion that they made this evening is on the table in terms of teeing off that intersection, hopefully maybe shaving into the island a little bit that's right there in order to, to get a more teed-off intersection, so that light, sign, um, excuse me, line of sight is a lot better when making the turns, but also it basically will force a calming effect for that speeding up the hill, because some of it will have to come to a full stop to make that turn onto Beach Street. I think that's crucial, and then the other more import, well, most importantly, is the safety of the pedestrians crossing at Bow Street. I thank the mayor for having multiple meetings on this and having the consultants doing a lot of work on this, and it's, I think that's the most willingness, everybody's been on board to get something done. It's finding that thing that works most for the site, works most long-term, and works most with regards to taxpayer funds. So, I'm looking forward to continuing to work on this, because this is something that, you know, the positivity of the, the meetings has been very good, and I commend Engineer Rozicki as well, because he's brought a, a breath of fresh air, I think, and a little bit more, a, a lot of realism to the meeting in terms of what would best suit the safety needs of that neighborhood, so, I'm looking forward to the further work on it.
Thank you. Consulor DeMambro.
I, I agree with your thoughts, Consulor DeMers. I have noticed, even when I've been up there, since this has, you know, become a problem, and it's, and it's come up in, you know, the traffic committee, as well as the mayor's, you know, department head meetings, and I was just there this past Saturday, and I kinda noticed, when I pulled out of Beach and I was taking a left onto Salem, a good gauge on how you know that those lines aren't working is because they're all worn out. All the white that was laid down is now turning back in asphalt, so...
Yeah.
There is something that definitely needs to be done, and it is kind of a bear, come, you know, taking, taking a left onto Salem from Beach, because it is, it is quite the rip on Salem when, when they're heading towards the center, or if they just take and they bear right onto Beach, I can see how it is, and will continue to be a problem, so, anything I can do to, to accommodate and help either you, Consul Mercer Bruin, or you, Consul DeMers, just please let me know, and I'm all on board with it.
Thank you, Lou.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Consulor Papalado.
Have we, I'm a little distanced from this, 'cause I know stuff was happening for a long time here, but has there been a traffic consultant in there to give recommendations on what to do? And did they recommend those lines that are out there today?
So, yes, we do have a traffic consultant we're working with. Just to clarify, I think what everyone already knows, we really didn't think that by painting lines, we were gonna solve the problem.
Right.
It was really just trying to gauge what it might look like if we were to go forward with this longer-term plan, whether it might, there might be some visual impact, kinda like what we're talking about doing down at Green and Nashore, and slimming the road with the lines. Kind of the visual to maybe get some attention of some of the drivers. I think some people have maybe responded favorably, but to your point, the lines are faded, so clearly not everybody. And again, I know, it just came up a minute ago, you know, I grew up in that area, the cars have been flying in that area since I had dark hair. They're still flying. I don't know that the lines made anything any worse. I, I don't know that that's accurate. They certainly haven't solved the problem, I think we all concede that. So, to your, to your point, we do have a traffic consultant working with us. There's a few different options, there's the, you know, the, the ultimate, you know, solution that would tee off the intersection, make that a hard right turn from Salem onto Beach, and then there's a couple of lesser options that may be, may be palatable, we don't know yet, we're still waiting to digest all that. But, yeah, we have TEC helping us, and Alex can fill you in on what they've done thus far and what the next steps are.
Are there other steps that they've recommended that we haven't got to yet, or it's...
I think they talked about putting barrels out there instead of the lines, that would certainly slow cars down, but it gets into a safety versus visual, and people start hitting the barrels, and they're all over the sidewalk, or people don't see them at night, so, I think the lines was to try to change people's behavior, knowing that if you've been making that right-hand slingshot for 30 years, the lines ain't gonna stop you. But, yeah, it ranges, I, I think teeing off that intersection makes a lot of sense, and adding some pedestrian crossing and flashing beacons and stuff in the area, it changes the, the people's front yards in the layouts, though, but if the impetus is to slow traffic down, I'd be happy with a bigger front yard, but that's, you know, part of the discussion and sightlines and teeing it up, and moving the island, or putting a right-hand turn into Beach, or a left-hand turn into Bow, all of those conversations kinda have to have out in the public sphere, but we have a full survey, we kinda just need to decide our direction, and then fund the design process, and then figure out the construction piece of it.
The end game is to tee that off there, and we think that will be the solution, but it's not gonna happen tomorrow, I, I guess, right?
Yeah, I mean, in, in a realistic approach, we go back to the state for our complete streets grant funding money in the fall, and then it kinda becomes possible to build in the spring, or you wait till the summer when school's out, so we're, we're a bit of ways away, but we're, it could be ready sooner, but I don't, just think we have the, the design and construction funds sort of ready to deploy today, so we're gonna work on kinda getting to a point where the public says, yeah, this is what we want.
Okay, thank you.
You? Anyone else? Yes, Consul Mercer Bruin.
I just wanted to follow that up, because we had a meeting not too long ago, Mayor Concanon is helping to keep the ship running, and I thank you for that, because projects like this can fall apart quickly. We met maybe five or six weeks ago, had a conversation about, does it make sense to have a community meeting? Because we could actually show some of the potential plans, but the thought process was, well, it's July, right? There's just a lot of people not around in July, so, the thought process was, well, maybe if we roll something out towards the end of August to, to show people, but we're very close. We, we have, we have three different options, so, and I love, Alex, that you just laid out the plan for what we're talking about for construction. We're not talking about 10 years, we're talking about design, construction, and build, possibly for the next spring into the summer, with the goal being, we don't go to another start of school, like we're gonna have to this year, without this being done, and we all wanted this to happen before school started, but ran, we ran into some, some concerns about various things that the engineers are helping us to work out, so, that's, that's everything. Maybe it was a mistake not to bring some plans forward for July, but again, the more people that can see them at once, the better.
Good. Everyone's good?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
A, a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Alex, thank you.
Thanks, Alex.
Mayor, thank you.
Thanks, Alex.
Have a good night.
Oh, that's me. Okay. I'm, oh, I'll wait for Gordon to sit down.
All right? I get a bunch of stuff. Do we give it to you all at once, or? Maybe a picture, still. Yeah, but I only, I only have a couple sets of those, so, I'll give you the conditions. Yeah, and these plans here. Is that a feature? Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Appreciate your ongoing support. Thank you, Gordon. Thank you, Gordon. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gordon.
Whenever you're ready, Madam Chair. Okay.
I'm gonna call the committee on special permits to order. Committee members include myself, Consulor Mercer Bruin, Ward Five, Consulor Campbell, who is absent, Consulor Viola, Consulor DeMambro, and Consulor DeMers. Do I have an order to, or...
Make a motion that we dispense with the reading in the previous minutes and approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Attorney Tarby, you have the floor.
Yes, good evening. This petition involves the replacement of Bob's Discount Furniture with a proposed ethnic supermarket, which will also contain, in the area, approximately 904 square feet of a dining, dining and grab and grow, grow area with a kitchen and prep area of 791 square feet. So, on July 9th, we met with the special permits committee, and at that committee meeting, we, we addressed a number of things, including, one, we confirmed that the cot corral was not included in the parking space count, two, we confirmed the number of required ADA parking spaces, three, we discussed the condition of the existing pavement and striping in the parking lot, and provided pictures of the same. In addition, we answered further questions about traffic counts, we reviewed the proposed floor plan, we discussed the proposed mitigation. So, since that meeting, I've had a couple of discussions with Consulor Mercer Bruin, and my client has agreed that the proposed mitigation would include everything that's been recommended by the city engineer, for a total of $56,000 in, in traffic information. In addition, there was a question that had come up about no parking signs that were on the common boundary line with Emblem 20. Now, I thought we were gonna be meeting in the, in the committee, when I thought we were, I forgot we were meeting in here, so, I just have one copy of, I can...
Make a motion to accept that as part of the permanent record?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, you, you want these, Gordon, yeah, you can just, have one on, one on each side here.
Just put them together, we'll funnel it through. You just put one on each side. Oh, it's the same photo? Yeah, it's the same.
All right, so I, I spoke with the, the property owner and asked him about the signage, and I had not seen the signage until my client provided me with, with the signage. I thought originally it, it had no parking signs there, but in fact, what happened was the, there were tenants from Emblem 120 that were parking in this parking lot without permission. They had no permission at all, similar to what, you know, you see happening in Woburn Village. And, so, the property owner spoke with management, said you can't park there, and property owner went ahead and posted these signs. So, that's the background behind the signs. In addition, Consulor Bruin had requested copies of the proposed sign plan, we, we, one more time, Gordon, I'm sorry, we, we don't have the signs actually for this location, but they're gonna look similar to this location in the...
Make a motion to accept those as part of the permanent record?
Some of...
All in favor?
Aye.
We'll just pass them down, yeah? Is that the same one?
It's the same one, but it's for the other side.
Okay, perfect.
Good thing you got that new hip.
Okay, then, so the signs that you, you see are on one of their other, other locations, they're pretty straightforward signs, nothing crazy, be a sign, a sign over the entrance, whatever the pylon sign package is out front, just gives the logo, how that looks, and then, are you, are you guys gonna have a pharmacy in there?
No.
No pharmacies, okay. So, these are just examples of what they would potentially look like. Also, at the last committee meeting, we, we talked about parking lot, there was a request, or it was discussed that perhaps the parking lot should be reseal coated with the parking spaces striped. I talked to both the property owner, and I also spoke with my client, and they have a estimated cost of approximately $150,700, which was higher than what I originally thought. There's 137,000 square feet of pavement out there, and to seal coat it, and then stripe the parking spaces, that's the cost, which we, we feel makes the project, you know, cost, cost prohibitive. But what you'll see in the conditions is that the, I did talk to the property owner, and the property owner, on an annual basis, meaning... and the property owner, on an annual basis, meaning every year, has agreed that he will crack fill the parking lot. And then, under 12B, the proposed language said, "Restripe any parking spaces requiring restriping." The property owner has told me that he will restripe every parking space on an annual basis, in addition to crack filling the parking lot. And then, Councilor Mercer Bruin and I were discussing before the meeting that perhaps there'd be language that could be added that would, you know, allow the building commissioner to inspect the parking lot on an annual basis, and if repairs need to be made to the parking lot, then the property owner will be required to make those repairs. I think that was the general intent, correct?
Before, I'm chairman of special permits, so I'll open it up to anybody on the committee first before I, does anybody have any questions? Oh, sorry, Councilor DeMambro.
Attorney Tarby, I just think, when it comes to the properties, and I've seen this, you know, in my ward, as a matter of fact, in my backyard, as we're all familiar with the 77 buildings behind my house, you know, there's some pretty large parking lots down there, and quite a few of them use, you know, US Seal Coat, you know, Seal Coat companies, and, you know, I have to say, it really does brighten up a property. It really, really does. When they seal it and they restripe it, it really puts a touch of class on a property. And I just felt that, and I just feel personally, that having a new grocery store and, you know, and putting in all of that effort to change out a furniture store, to make it into a grocery store with prepared meals and a kitchen and everything and seating, you know, I think the least the landlord could do, as a business owner and a property owner of commercial real estate in the city of Woburn, I don't think it's a big stretch, you know, and it should be part of his maintenance budget anyway, to seal and restripe his parking lot, just as, you know, as the property, and to make it look, you know, pristine. I just think it's a great reflection on the property owner, and not only that, but the retailers that are in that complex. I just, I don't think it's, I don't think it's a far stretch.
Well, at that cost, it's pretty significant. It's, that's three times the amount of the traffic mitigation. Plus, it's not a requirement of the Section 11.5.
I just think, as like I said, the property owner, as part of his, you know, building maintenance and his property maintenance, you know, again, that's what happens when you own a large piece of commercial or industrial real estate. I mean, you gotta invest back into the property. It's just all part of it. And as, I think the landlord, they should take the responsibility of that, not necessarily the retail.
Yeah, but even for the landlord to be spending that kind of money for a tenant, you know, I think we're stepping into an area that we've never stepped in, and all the time up and down here, we're gonna require people to, you know, seal coat parking lots at over $100,000.
Just like I said, I think it's aesthetically appealing to the property and the businesses.
Right, but, you know, it's, the aesthetics, you know, I don't think are at play here. They've got a tenant that's gonna move in, people are gonna shop, but they're not gonna shop there. They're not gonna not go there because the parking lot is not resealed. Plus, if it's resealed a year from now, you're not even gonna know that it was resealed, you know?
I know.
There's not much you, what I disagree on, but I respectfully disagree with you on this.
I understand that. Just my opinion.
Yep, no issues?
Councilor DeMers.
You know, I understand the councilor's concerns with the parking lot area. I would think that our primary function here on the council is to ensure the safety of both the travelers and the patrons, and I don't find a need for repaving or a seal coating as a safety matter. I think we're going, we're gonna go down a slippery slope when we're talking about $100,000 plus for an aesthetic, especially when, if our real concerns at the meeting before were solely based around traffic, that intersection that this comes off of, and we're looking at $100,000 worth of aesthetic versus the additional moves for traffic, I'm asking, what are we talking about, then? It's a supermarket. What's next? When we have a petition at Woburn Village, are we for a new fast food restaurant or whatever? Are we gonna request that the whole parking lot's being paved? I think it's a bad precedent to set, especially for, you know, a parking lot that, you know, I get it. It probably doesn't look great when you look at it, when it has the crack fill in it, but that's maintenance so that they don't turn into potholes. I don't know. I'm concerned with what precedent this sets for this council, to be conditioning aesthetics in the, even 50 to $60,000 range, I think is a big ask. So, that's all I have for now, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilor DeMers. Anybody else? Counselor?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I sort of, I agree with Councilor DeMers on his statements that, I know there's other businesses, other supermarkets that are in the city that their parking lots are like the same way. They're crack filled. They'd look a lot better if they were completely reasphalted or seal coated, but that amount of money, asking somebody to do that, it's astronomical, and I don't think it's right. But, I think we should be just sticking with the safety aspect of this. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, so, I'm gonna, I have a few comments. Joe, the price that you recommended, I think, is, that's an awful lot, absolutely. Certainly not, I wouldn't wanna put that kind of burden on your client. I'm not sure that I feel the same way about putting that burden on the person who owns a building, but I'm not sure that it actually costs that much, right? So, at the end of the day, I'm happy to come up with a solution that requires the regular maintenance of the lot and restriping the entire lot with the yellow lines, because with the restriping of the entire lot, not just ones that look like they need to be restripped, will absolutely make it look better and will be safer. And I'd just like to point out for everyone, I can tell you right now, for me, as a city council of Ward 5, anything that gets built, I absolutely care about the aesthetics. Been doing that for 19 years. I can tell you, when we put together the Commerce Way Overlay District, we painstakingly decided the kind of materials that would be used. When we approved the Northern Bank Building, painstakingly decided what should be used for aesthetics, right? So, for me, and again, everybody can do their own thing, but for me, the aesthetics are very important. It's how we present ourselves to our constituency, to people who come into this city, which happen to be over $400,000, 400,000 people a day. So, we want things to look nice. We want them to be safe, but they should look nice. So, I think we could achieve the same thing, Attorney Tarby, by having the whole lot restripped and then agreeing to maintain that regularly. And in the past, we've asked Commissioner Quinn to either himself or somebody from his staff, keep an eye on it as it wears, and we let him decide when it's time to do it. I don't think it's reasonable to say every year, but for the first time out, I would like to see the entire lot restripped.
Yeah, that's not an issue.
That will absolutely make a difference. So, we can say that the lot will be restripped in its entirety and maintained, maintained accordingly by inspections conducted, I'm just spitballing here for a potential add-on, and maintained accordingly by inspection by the commissioner, building commissioner, something to that respect, but I, something to that intent, Joe, Attorney Tarby.
That should be, yeah.
Now, in the event that the lot breaks down and we're filling potholes all over the place, I want us to have an option to talk about that resurfacing. So, I'm happy to, you know, take a look at any proposed language that you have, and I will also take a minute here to try to put something together. Will you and your client be amenable to that?
Yes.
Okay. So, just give me a minute, Joe, if I could, if the council will indulge me just to, for a minute. in Ward 5, I try to make sure we have all of these things worked out to the best of our ability, and obviously, you all have to weigh in. The reason why this did not take place is because the email about the cost came a little later in the afternoon about the striping and the resurfacing. So, my apologies, Joe, to you and your client for us not having this work completed here. So, the property owner shall complete the following annually, restripe the entire parking lot. I don't think that needs to be done annually, but I think we need to have a mechanism in here. Restripe the entire parking lot annually and will be maintained, maintained and inspected by the building commissioner.
Madam Chair?
Yes. Councilor DeMers, please, you may.
I would be leery of the trace of words with "maintain" and the building commissioner, because that puts the onus on the commissioner to maintain.
Right, you're right. He does do inspections for us, and we rely heavily on him for that.
I agree. I agree. I don't want the word "maintain" just because it would, the onus would fall on the commissioner.
Yes. Attorney Tarby, thank you.
The parking lot shall be restripped in its entirety and inspected annually by the building commissioner, period. In the event any parking lot maintenance or repairs are required, the property owner shall complete said maintenance and repairs within a reasonable time after notice from the building commissioner. Something to that effect. That's just some general language.
It doesn't capture the spirit of what I'm looking for, Attorney Tarby, and the spirit of that is, at some point, if your client is gonna be here for 20 years, that lot will need to be resurfaced, right?
Right. That's, I guess, the purpose of the annual inspections, and he'll, he'll at some point make a determination that it may need to be resurfaced.
Inspected annually by the building commissioner, and a determination will be made as to the requirement to resurface?
Madam Chair, may I ask the attorney a question? Attorney Tarby, was it my understanding that originally, when you gave your presentation this evening, you mentioned that the property owner was willing to restripe the parking lot annually?
Yeah, the property owner, proposed Condition 12, annually, the property owner would crack fill the parking lot, and to restripe, it was proposed in to change the language to make it more restrictive, restripe all parking spaces and parking lines.
So, if the property owner has already agreed to do that annually, he's already agreeing to a more restrictive change to that one item? I think that may suffice if he's conceding that.
And if that's the case, is the property owner actually saying he'll do it annually?
Correct. He'll do it, he'll crack fill the parking lot, and he'll restripe all of the parking spaces and lines on an annual.
Every year?
Annually, yes.
That's number 12.
Then, if, I didn't realize that the owner of the property made that agreement with the property.
I spoke with him this afternoon.
Okay. That works for me.
That would be, I think, the language in Condition 12, with my revision to 12B, that changes, "Restripe any parking spaces requiring restriping," to "Restripe all parking spaces and lines."
Okay, so, yeah, so, Condition 12, that's what kinda threw me off here, because it's at "any parking spaces that require restriping." We're gonna say, "We're restripping the entire lot." We've changed it to that. I'm good with that, annually.
Can I get a clarification on what that 12B is going to say? Restripe any parking spaces and lines?
The parking lot shall be restripped in its entirety annually, correct, Attorney Tarby?
Yeah, well, the language that's there, so, 12 reads, "The property owner shall complete the following annually. A, crack fill the parking lot, and B, we're changing what you have, Gordon, to restripe all parking spaces and lines." So, it'll be done annually.
Eliminating the requiring restriping?
Yes.
So, it's just say, "Restripe all parking spaces and lines."
Correct.
Thank you.
So, that means everything gets, everything gets done every year.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Counselor.
Question for clarification from Attorney Tarby. That will include all markings as well, such as arrows and stop wording on the ground as well, correct?
Yeah, all the yellow lines and everything it says.
I'm okay with that. I'm okay with that.
And I think to that effect, Madam Chair, too, as the enforcement authority of the special permit, Building Commissioner Quinn could go out and conduct that annual review if we get that on a schedule annually.
I'm okay. I don't, I think we're, I'm, from the council's perspective, I'm happy to move this forward. I just had one quick question about the signage, Attorney Tarby. I know you said it doesn't, it's just a representation. Are the colors similar to what we might see there?
Yep.
There's no illumination, there's no flashing signs.
The signs that we submitted are similar to what you're gonna use.
Yes.
There's nothing flashing, there's no neon, nothing?
Nope, none of that.
Okay.
And if I could just make one final comment. So, the conditions that we submitted this evening, the same conditions you had in committee with two exceptions. 11B adds back the $28,000 that we were trying to negotiate out, and the second would be Condition 12, which we just went over. Those are the only changes from what was reviewed in committee.
And I just want, through the chair, I just wanna make sure, Gordon, you understand what we have?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Does anybody else, do we wanna open it up to anybody else on the board? If anybody else has any comments? No? Okay. President Dillon, you're all set?
Good, thank you.
Okay. Attorney?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay.
Make a motion that the petition that's sent out ought to pass with the 13 conditions as amended?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you so much.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, gentlemen. Good luck.
Good luck.
All in favor?
Aye.
Call the Committee on Public Safety and License to order on the committee. Counselor Papalatto, Counselor Campbell, who is absent, Counselor DeMers, Counselor Toro, and I serve as chairman, Counselor. as chairman, Councilor Ferrillo.
Make a motion that we dispense with the reading of the previous minutes and approve?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We have before us tonight two matters. The first is Woburn hosts Lions Club for a special event permit for a road race at Horn Pond in area streets on October 19th, 2025, with a request for a waiver of umbrella liability insurance. I have before me a properly executed and complete application.
I'll make a motion that the request for a race will be sent out ought to pass.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The second matter on the agenda is the Festival on the Common, a special event permit to allow the festival in the Woburn Common and surrounding streets on November 29th, 2025, with a request for waiver of umbrella liability insurance. I have before me a completed and executed application requesting same.
Same action.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Always the fastest go around.